I'd like to call to order our Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Please let the record show that all members of the city council are present along with members of the city staff and members of the public. We have asked Counselor Stevens to lead us in the pliable allegiance tonight.
Please all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Stevens. I've asked Counselor Arnold to offer our invocation.
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow our heads as the beginning of this city council meeting, we ask thy presence to be with us, thy Spirit to be with us and guide us in all that we do. We're thankful for the opportunity to create a small community within the United States of America, and we ask that you bless our community and the surrounding communities as well, that we might be a shining light unto those around us, that we might conduct ourselves well, that we ask a blessing upon all of those that have their careers to service in the public safety and the public works, and even those people that are the office people, we ask that you bless them, bless their families as they're away from them, as they serve us. We kindly appreciate all that thou has given us. We strive to serve thee in all that we do, that we might be instruments in thy hands, and ask that thou would guide us in those endeavors. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counselor Arnold. We now have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas. No action will be taken during the public comment. If you do approach the microphone, please state your name and your city of residence, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we will move on to presentations and reports. We did have some discussion. Counselor Arnold?
I'd like to make a motion to bring the discussion of the ambulance services to the presentation of reports, so we can respect those that are here for that, that they might be able to get to their events.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. We are going to move the agenda, item number five, discussion concerning ambulance services, to number one in presentation reports. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. As the councils were well aware, we've been looking at a number of things for the past couple of years as far as budgetary issues and ways that we can start preparing for 2030 in light of the potential possibility that we're going to lose a good chunk of our budget. And one of those things concerns our fire department, our ambulance services in particular. So recently, we had requested, had sent out requests for proposals, RFPs, for the ambulance services. Now, this only includes ambulance services only. It's not anything else beyond that at this particular point. Two cities responded to that. That was Ogden and Roy. And Chief Shali has reached out to both of them, and we've asked for both chiefs to be here tonight, which they are. We didn't give them any talking points per se, but we would like to just maybe let them say a few words each, and if they want to talk about their proposals, if you guys could just shorten that up as best you can, and you can make it as long as you want to. I don't really care. But if we give them a few moments of time to discuss that, and then kind of open it up to the council, to hit them up with some questions that you all may have, this is, these are the bosses here. So this would be our best opportunity to hit them up now for things you might have some questions on, or some doubts or concerns about. So that was our intent, was just to kind of do an open mic and give both chiefs the opportunity to say a few words if you wanted, and we'll proceed as that lays out.
Do you care if I do introductions?
I know. Let's have you come on up, chief. Thank you.
So a lot of respect to the gentlemen that are sitting there tonight. But you've got Chief Matthew and Chief Slater from Ogden, Fire Chief Mike Matthew, and Deputy Chief Slater from Ogden, and you've got Chief Williams from Roy. So, pretty good people.
Let's have Ogden come up first, to just go alphabetical. How about that? And it's not like you got to get everything into the one shot. We can come back and forth if we need to, just a little bit, so.
Okay.
We're not, we're not asking you to reread your proposal, because we can read too, so.
Just the high points, you know?
That's good to know. Well, thank you, Riverdale Council members, mayor, administration. Thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation. I think most importantly, to present to you, because you have our RFPs and you can read them, is something I put together, at least from our perspective, about what's this all about, and why would you consider this? It's basic 101 EMS provision of services. And what we do in this part of the country and in this county is what we have is a tiered response for emergency medical services. What that means is you have three significant and distinct components that are, that come together in taking care of a patient who's having an emergency medical incident. For example, if someone was to have a heart attack right now here in this council chambers, you'd activate the 911 system. There's, there's standards under NFPA that they recommend for, for example, answering that phone call. What's the reasonable amount of time you'd expect somebody to answer a 911 call? Well, their standard is less than 15 seconds, followed by an interrogation. And sometimes that's how you feel. If you've ever called 911, they're going, why so many questions? Well, the reason for the questions is to determine what type of medical response you need, whether it's with lights and siren, whether it's with EMTs, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics, or whether it's just the EMTs only and with an ambulance to transport the patient to the hospital. Because the resources, it's important to have them rationed in terms of prioritization of where they need to be on what calls and where, what's most necessary. So paramedics are not sent on all calls. They're not necessary based on the interrogation of the information that the 911 caller puts the 911 caller through. And so based on that, they'll, they'll trigger what the response is. At any given time, any of the responders, whether it's one of your Riverdale police officers, whether it's one of your Riverdale firefighters, they can upgrade and ask for additional ambulances, additional paramedic units, or a paramedic unit if one wasn't sent. Within those three distinct emergency medical response identities, the first one is the first responder. It needs to get there hopefully within four to six minutes to hopefully reverse any brain damage, get oxygen to the patient if they're not breathing, stop excessive bleeding, and do life-saving techniques within those first four minutes, six minutes in that response time. The second piece, which NFPA, NFPA, I hate, I apologize if I use too many acronyms, but NFPA stands for National Fire Protection Association. It's an industry-driven collection of opinions about what we should be operating under, what's the best practices. So under that NFPA, the advanced life support piece, or the paramedic piece, I use those interchangeably, they need to be there within eight minutes of being dispatched to that scene. So when you couple these together, the standards are this, the 15 seconds to answer the 911 call. And let me even give you something, so you can follow along, if I may. On one side of this piece of paper, it's a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and you can have it to, how many you have, five, six? On one side, she's passing that out, are just the EMS recommendations. And it's, it's basically a bar chart that goes along with it. The call initiation is in green. So on the one side, I want to draw your attention to is just the EMS recommendation side on NFPA 1710, looking at this side first. So call initiation, the call processing time's green, so that's occurs in the 911 center. At that point in time, and then to that 90 seconds, we need to have the information enough to respond to your incident. So the alarm goes off, the address, the type of call. We're given 60 seconds for typical EMS calls to go en route. So 60 seconds scramble time to get to the, to the unit and to go en route. Does that always happen? Yes and no. Sometimes we exceed it, sometimes we don't, depending on what we're doing at the time, or if we're in bed at the time. Then the next two timestamps start, and that's your first responder piece. This is basically the Riverdale firefighter first responder piece, when they're responding into your community as a first responder, EMTs. And keep in mind, they're trained equivalently as to what our ambulance personnel are trained to. So they have the same medical capability to treat the patients with the same equipment that we would with an ambulance. They're responding within that four minutes. Then the other piece that's just below that in orange is the advanced life support piece, or the paramedic piece. Those two particular service delivery items are not being in question with this RFP. Your, your first responders from Riverdale Fire Department would still be performing this service. The paramedics that are continuing, that are coming to your city right now, whether it be Roy paramedics or Ogden paramedics, are continuing to perform this service, and that's not being changed. Now, the next one below, which is kind of the lighter orange, is what we call the average scene time. And for a significantly critically injured patient, meaning under trauma, we want to have, keep that scene time to less than 10 minutes. Because ideally, what their definitive care is getting them to the hospital and into the OR. That's what typically saves lives if somebody's had a significant trauma event. So the, the standards are, the ER docs are telling us, don't, don't spend more than 10 minutes on the scene, and then get ready, and then get en route to transport to the hospital. So what I've overlaid on that is if we take the first responder timeframe, the timeframe for the advanced life support, they arrive on scene, and then even from the time the first responders arrive on scene, then I've done the timestamp for the 10 minutes of on-scene time. So that would be even the lowest. That gives you, in terms of now, when does the transport element need to be there? It needs to be there within 14 minutes of them being notified. And, and the thing to keep in mind about that is that's just the ambulance transport piece. That's what you've put out the request for proposal for, is just the ambulance piece. What I can tell you, in looking at that, is that both of us as respondents would meet well within those timeframes. That's typically not an issue. It's all about availability of those units and where they're at and located at. I've also did, now flip your paper on the other side, and I've overlaid, and what I've done is I've taken our response times of our particular units, ambulances and the paramedic units, whether it be ours and or Roy's, and overlaid on the paramedic piece, they typically only go on emergency, so they'll only go lights and sirens. So I've only used their emergent timeframe. And so those are somewhat irrelevant, because nothing's changing there. But to the left, I've showed you now what our ambulance response time would be if we responded from our respective stations where they're located at to 700 West Riverdale Road. And I've given you the non-emergent response is if they travel with no lights and siren. And there's many times that occurs, because it's not medically necessary for them to get there right away. And what, what is also nice about this tiered response system is your first responder firefighters can upgrade our ambulance. If they get there first, and this patient is now more critical than what was derived from the interrogation from the dispatcher and the 911 caller, and this is more critical, they can say, ambulance 51, ambulance 31, upgrade. And that means that they turn their lights and siren on and respond sooner, so they could get to the scene quicker. Police officer can do that. They, they're the incident commander of the scene, and if they need us to upgrade, or they can also cancel us. One of the things I'd like to mention is that in the analysis of your ambulance activity, just for this year so far, I did a little bit of research, and you've had, so far, ambulance 41 has been dispatched 319 times, and ambulance 41 has transported 134 patients. It's a transportation ratio of about 42%. So there's times when ambulances are called, and then they get canceled because they're not needed. So for example, 911 caller driving by 700 West Riverdale Road sees an auto accident, calls 911. Is anybody hurt? I think so. I just drove by. So based on that information, the 911 dispatcher will send an ambulance, a first responder. They won't send a paramedic unit unless it's typically a more serious call, such as an auto pedestrian, auto motorcycle, auto bicycle, where the likelihood of more serious injury occurs, then the paramedic unit would go as well. And based on that preliminary information, that's what the response is. As soon as a police officer from Riverdale gets there, there's no injuries, ambulance, whatever you can cancel, or cancel the ambulance, cancel medical. The first responder unit may still continue on, because there could be a hazardous material spill, a cleanup needed. The first responder firefighter from Riverdale will still come and do all of the things that they do. It's just the transportation mechanism that you're talking about contracting out. So the point of this presentation I gave you is to kind of just give you a graphic understanding and illustration of, of here's the window of when a reasonable ambulance response time is necessary. And I think we can serve you very well with that, with our five ambulances. I've talked with Mayor Allen about the ambulance we have in Washington Terrace serving Riverdale. He has no concerns or problems with that, of having that unit come down, because the first two that would come to Riverdale would be the one in the terrace, or the one in West Ogden, then the one downtown, then the one at 21st and almost Harrison. And last but not least, would be the one from 450 East North Street. If you need four ambulances, and we have four ambulances available, they would come here. Another thing to keep in mind, because of the licensing requirements and it, is if we became a licensed provider for ambulance services to your community, it'd be no different than any area within Ogden City. If a call comes in and you need our services, and they need three ambulances, we would send three ambulances. If we're out of ambulances, we'll call our neighbors, and same with Roy, they'll do the same. We don't distinguish, we serve right now, Washington Terrace, the northwest part of Weaver County, which coming July 1st, we will no longer service there, because Weaver Fire District wants to staff an ambulance in their Far West Station. So we're not longer going to service that. That accounts for about 300 transports a year. Currently, Riverdale averages about 300 transports a year, or one a day, one, somewhere between 300 and 400. I think in 2023, you did close to 390 to 400 transports, so it's one point something transports a day. But so far, right now, you're, you're transported about 134 up through May 28th, as far as what the data is showing us. So we, we failed by decreasing the, the demand on our five ambulances currently in the area out in Northwest Weaver County, which is actually further away from Riverdale. And redeploying that asset capability to Riverdale is something we can handle without a problem. So with that, I'll-
Thanks, chief. Just a couple of questions, if you guys have any, or do you want to wait for the other? You have any questions for Chief Matthew? All right. Apparently, we have none for you, so well done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Matthew, mayor, council. I'm grateful for this opportunity. Chief Matthew, my former boss and supervisor, so he did an outstanding job with his presentation. Really, I think he informed you of your data. He also did a great job of explaining the EMS process and how it works. I don't have a whole much to like to add. I think he did a phenomenal job of explaining the services. I do not have handouts for you. If you have my RFP in front of you, there's a map that I attached to it. If you want to flip to that, it's really the same, what we provided you as well, is the response times. I really don't have much to add. I think Chief Matthew did a phenomenal job of explaining that. And I think you have really a great option between the two departments. One thing that we have done, within I've been a chief the last eight months, and we have been helping Riverdale City, as staffing issues were difficult to staff the ambulance, I think we've done a real good job of being neighbors and working together to help when we can. And that's something we have, we've done the last eight months. And so I think a really big part as far as the questioning was the relationships that were built. Ogden City, Roy, I think we do a really good job of helping our neighbors. I think Chief Matthew's done a phenomenal job through Ogden City to help his neighboring departments. I think Roy City does the same as well. We recognize that each of us needs help individually, sometimes staffing and different things going on within the cities make it challenging. And I think we've, that's probably our forefront, is relationships are critically important. But still, looking at the map, as far, as far as response times, Chief Matthew laid it out perfectly, the standards. And we meet those standards as well. As far as our staffing levels and ambulances, I think that's important. Ogden City has a robust amount of ambulances. He's done a great job of positioning those. Roy City, we also have three that we try to maintain. We have typically two at Station 31, one down at 32, and it'd be the same type of model that Chief Matthew was describing to you, meaning our ambulance 31 to be our closest response. And if you look at the time zones, wheel out different areas, you can see the different areas where you're heavily populated on the west side of Riverdale. We've also provided times during the busy times for the holidays, down that thorough road of Riverdale Road, at the response times. And we also meet those standards as well. So other than that, I don't have much more to add. I think, again, Chief Matthew answered all those questions. But I'm happy to take any questions. But we're grateful for the opportunity. Whoever you choose, you're going to get a great service. I do, I do believe that we also, like Ogden City, can provide you excellent medical care to your patients. We work well with your engine companies. We do already. Our paramedic rescue responds in this area of the majority of time, unless we're busy. And so I do believe we've, we've established those relationships with your crews already. And so I believe this opportunity will intertwine seamlessly. I think there will be no change. We've already been doing it for several months, when the opportunities arisen. So I do believe that transition and the opportunity will do an excellent job. So that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Any questions?
And if I, if you have questions, that means I haven't done as good as Chief Matthew.
Counsel Arnold?
I just wanted to say thank you for coming to our meeting and providing the RFPs. I don't have any questions for you guys, but I, and I don't want to, we need to get into this thing deeper and really grill Chief Shali about, I think he can answer the questions that we have, that I have. And, you know, but I just want to say thanks for coming in, and, you know, we'll, we need to get with him and say, you know, rest tax, because we're talking money and time and stuff, so.
At one point, I felt to mention, we also, like Ogden City, we're, we have gone ahead and our license for Hooper and West Haven will be turned over to Weaver Fire District here in a month. And so that, those, that call volume out west will be reduced, making potentially our ambulance in the western side of Roy more available for the ambulance service here in Roy, or in Riverdale and in Roy. So that's happened kind of throughout the county with us and Ogden City. So just another point I want to add.
Any other questions?
And that seems to be consistent, right? With both Ogden and Roy, you had some, some resources that are freeing up. Is that, is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, it does. It does. It definitely frees some resources, able to reduce. We, we ran quite a few calls into Hooper and West Haven. We've had that license for over 30 years, and now Weaver Fires position themselves where they can provide the service at a quicker response, like Chief Matthew talked about the standard. That's where at the forefront, getting, getting a first responder to someone's house, providing initial care, and then getting an ambulance or a paramedic there. And Weaver Fire could provide a quicker response. And truly, that's what's important here. And I do believe between the two agencies, whoever you select can definitely meet the standards and exceed it, just like in the RFP suggested in the question one, so.
Mayor, we did have a, I'd taken some notes from our pre-planning meeting, that there were some questions, and maybe we could have Chief Matthew come up. And these aren't, aren't rocket science, but what would be your intentions with our ambulance? And that was one of the questions came up. Would, would you keep one in our station, I guess is one question? Would you use, want to use our ambulance, or how would we work that out, or what would we do with it kind of thing, assuming we go that route? Have you thought about that, or?
Here's my thoughts. Currently, because we have two that are relatively close to your city right now, we wouldn't position one in your station, because that would maybe stimulate some additional kind of relationship issues we'd have to work through. And what I would suggest is this, is that there's, there's two elements that would occur if either one of us began providing ambulance service for you. It would be one, whichever you choose, we would then make application to the state to become the licensed provider for this service area. It's state regulated, as far as how the licenses are regulated. They would have to give us this license. You would have to give us a letter of support to each, either one, to say you'd like us to take this area. And then if we became licensed, with or without respect, and I don't mean this with, with anything other than just facts, if we are licensed by the state, we're obligated to serve that area. And it doesn't matter that it's Riverdale City, or Ogden City, or Washington Terrace, or Far West. We're, if we're licensed, we have an obligation to serve that area to the best of our ability. And so what I would suggest, if you're, for lack of better term or example, is tipping your, dipping your toes in the water, so to speak, to see if this is something you want to permanently do, I would suggest you hold on to your ambulance and not, not issue it to either one, or get into an arrangement where you allow us to use it, but then who pays for maintenance, who takes care of it, those things, and just keep it. And if this arrangement is something that you do, and like every good interlocal agreement and attorney rights, is the agreement as good as the, the cancellation clause, right? You can write a five-year agreement, but if you can give notice to either party of a six-month notice to terminate the agreement, something's not working out, you can just terminate it, and you could resume providing ambulance service. So I would suggest you, the best interest of Riverdale, hold on to it, wait a year, and if, whoever you've chosen, if it looks like it's working out really well, then maybe revisit the agreement. Because I think what you can do, and this is what we have with Washington Terrace, is we're licensed in Washington Terrace. If they cancel our interlocal agreement, we still provide service to Washington Terrace because of our state license. However, the agreement has other matters of things of interest of the city that they might want us to do. You may want us to come give you council reports. You may want us to make, make sure that, hold harmless and liability issues, and that there's no issues of you being responsible for any of our personnel. You put that all in, the legality is that interlocal agreement, any performance issues you want to go over, similar to like your tow agreement, I think with Von Stoff, I think that's who you still use, Von Stoffer, but-
Stoffer, yeah.
Their Stoffer, yeah. And so with that, you can put certain things in that agreement, and then in a year, if everything's working out okay, maybe you revisit it and revisit items of concern to you. Because at the end of the day, we're not here as private providers and pitched, sales pitched as a business entity. We want what's best for Riverdale and what's best for our communities. And if it works for you, then great. If, if there's a different avenue that works for you, maybe your firefighters say this, this is too cumbersome waiting for Ogden or Roy to get here, and it's in the best interest of the patient to go back and do this ourselves. And, and at the end of the day, it's elected officials' decision. For example, that the two service areas that we're vacating, the Weaver Fire District is choosing to provide those services, and it's going to cost them a lot of money to do that. There's not enough call volume to offset the cost of operation. You, on the other hand, are looking at maybe not doing it, because you don't have the call volume to generate the revenue from transports to support it, and you don't have enough call volume every single day to support a full-time staffed ambulance, day in and day out, if you're looking at it from a industry standard viewpoint. But in their particular area, they're choosing to have their taxpayers pay more money to offset the cost of the operation of that unit. Simply stated, it's not that complicated of equation. It costs money to do this. And they're choosing to do that for those areas, because their elected officials on the fire board have chosen to do that. Other elected officials choose other things. We, as appointed officials, follow the direction of our elected officials based on their policy decisions they make. So I would suggest, in Riverdale's best interest, hold on to their ambulance, regardless of who you choose. See if it works out for a while, and keep your options open, that you can go back into it. Because if, if you choose to say, I want to reapply and reacquire our license in our area, I can tell you, at least my mayor, mayor will tell me not to oppose that application, because you're our neighboring city. If that's what Riverdale chooses they want to do, we will support that, and we will vacate that licensed area and allow you to resume, apply for it, and become the licensed provider. Hope that-
Yeah, that's good. Thanks, Mike.
Counsel Arnold?
When you're talking about areas, and you're saying the area, you know, you apply for this, to the state to cover that area, can we dice up Riverdale? So Ogden takes some of that, how do you, what's the lines? How do you say lines on areas? Is it this street?
Yeah, it'll be specifically described on the license which areas that you want to do. Currently, Riverdale City Fire Department has the license for Riverdale City proper corporate limits. And so the proposal was for, you know, all of it, but it doesn't say that it can't be done differently. It's, it's something that you guys could obviously talk about.
Honestly, I mean, if we went with Roy, it would make sense for our Washington Terrace side of Riverdale to go with Ogden type of thing. So I mean, things to think about like that would be something we should consider.
Yeah, that, that was what I was going to bring up, was looking at the map. If you take the railroad tracks, and you say, Roy is on the west side, and Ogden is on the east side, you know, all of the, you know, the calls for that, that makes, you know, looking at the map and, and your estimates, both of your estimates for response times and stuff, you get the best of both worlds at that point. So it might be something to think about.
Roamer, Roamer Park's 11 minutes, according to your map, from Roy. But, but there's an ambulance, an Ogden ambulance right there in Riverdale, or in Washington Terrace, so.
So going off the same concept they talked about, though?
Let's, let's have you come up to the mic, just, just so the people can like in there. No.
It's recording.
You can't hear anything.
Just like the two gentlemen are saying right now, the chiefs are talking about that concept of the first responder. We have an agreement with Washington Terrace right now, that they're in- now that their engine responds into our area from that station. So it's really going to be identical to what you said in Riverdale. It's just not our engine. Now it's Washington Terrace's engine that's getting there within the four minutes. So we do have that in place.
Okay, that's good. Good thoughts, so.
Just a second. Is, is Washington Terrace, I know their ambulance is covered by, by Ogden. Is there, is there engines covered by Ogden also? Oh, they have their own engines? Okay. All right.
And I, I'll, I'll tell you this, one of the conversation we had with Washington Terrace when we did this is they were, when I talked to Mayor Allen, he's actually pleased that we are a little bit further behind in terms of response. Because, does a couple of things. One, the first responders get an opportunity to treat the patient, establish a relationship, build rapport, in preparation for the transport folks to get there. And so sometimes you can almost have too many people there on top of each other. And for example, in Salt Lake City, with they, they use Gold Cross, their fire department also has paramedics on their engine and they, they do all the field care and then they call the ambulance in when they're ready to do the transport. And, and so it, I think the important thing to keep in mind is, you may believe that the response time piece is the most important because it's an emergency, people need to get there that quick. This particular component does not have to be there as quickly. What's most important is your first responders and your paramedic piece, which those are not changing. The transport piece, because those other two pieces are sound and meet NFPA requirements, there's not even a national standard for the transport mechanism and how soon they have to arrive. What some cities have done in big, high-profile, highly populated cities is they've even extended the ambulance response time even greater because the private ambulance provider doesn't have enough assets and they're allowed to be even more delayed to that call because the first responders and the paramedics are there taking care of the patient, because of that scene time to stabilize the patient anyway. We can't just, if it's noticed, you go on a car accident, we don't just throw somebody in the back of the ambulance and leave two minutes after the ambulance arrives. There's stabilization, care that needs to be done for prep, preparation for transport. Or, right now, your rate for this year, almost 60% of the time, we're not even transporting a patient to the hospital. So the ambulance isn't even needed.
Is that your, the red badge? What's the difference between the red badge and the green badge?
It's, this is a paramedic certification.
Yeah.
And the other one's the intermediate ambulance certification.
So, and it's, is it required? I know Roy, it's required, right, to pursue the?
We, we like Ogden have two levels, AMT and then paramedic. Some, some jurisdictions have EMT. We, we changed years ago to the advanced EMT.
Okay.
And your firefighters are AEMT. So they're the equivalent to what our ambulance personnel are. So they should be able to do all those immediate life-saving techniques while we're still en route, still getting ready to transport. And sometimes, yeah, the patient's not ready to be transported until you do those things.
Any other questions? I just want to offer, you know, some gratitude too for you guys showing up. It's, it's great to put a face with those proposals and, and you guys are obviously very professional. And, I mean, I, I think I would feel comfortable with either one of you. It's just good to put a face with it and know what we're going to get from you. So thanks for taking the time. I know you're both very busy. You're both chiefs. And we'll let you go ahead and get back to your cities and your own meetings. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the mayor's report. I don't have much for this meeting, but we did have Weber Human Services come. Last Wednesday, they came for a visit to our senior center and had lunch with us. And we were able to take them on a tour and show them. Surprisingly, they had never seen our senior center and they were, they were blown away by it. It's, it's, they commented that it's the nicest facility, you know, that they've seen and that it's, could be one of the nicest ones in the entire area. So that process is still moving forward.
Did they like the lunch?
Yeah.
They actually did. They were really impressed.
Lunch was great.
Kind of surprised because they had told us before that our standards weren't to their standards, but I think afterwards they had changed their minds on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. We had chicken cordon bleu that day, so it was a good day. But we're in negotiations right now on the contract. We will be selected as at least one from the southern end, if not the selection from the southern end. We won't know that till next year, but we will for this year at least. So, so things are looking good for them.
We didn't meet their standards because we didn't have sauerkraut?
I don't, it was, I don't know, Alan.
They were worried that they didn't meet their nutrition standards. But anyway, I think they were very, very impressed. Just the other thing is the airshow is coming up on June 29th and 30th, so the end of the month, Saturday and Sunday. Just a great opportunity to go out. It's free. They're expecting as many as 700,000 people coming into the area. So just something to be aware of. That's all I had. Any reports from the city council on their assignments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the swearing in. Officer Hayden Price, we'll do that first. You want to take care of that, chief, and?
All right. Well, let me introduce first, this is Officer Hayden Price. Can't tell you how excited we are to have her serve in the Riverdale community. Just a little background on her. She served as a dispatcher at Weber Dispatch for about, what, you're going to have two years or is it a little more?
Three.
Three. I first met her when she came to our citizens academy. We host the traffic portion, DUI portion of the countywide citizens academy. And as a dispatcher, she came to attend so she could learn more about what the police officers are doing, so she could do her job better as a, as a dispatcher. I think that maybe sparked it there, but maybe she had a spark before for law enforcement. But from that day forward, she was in contact with me numerous times wanting to work as a police officer here in Riverdale City. Unfortunately, we didn't have the sponsorship program. That didn't stop her. She says, I'll sponsor myself. I'll do whatever it takes. She started that sponsorship on her own, put herself through the academy, and was subsequently picked up by Woods Cross. She spent about a year there. And during this timeframe, we didn't have jobs aligned with, I think, when she applied that I'm aware of. Job opportunity came up and here she is, she's back, applying with us. She went on several ride-alongs before that. She's just always showed a desire to work for Riverdale City, which really impressed me. And not just desire, but she, she really worked her butt off to get herself through the academy and do whatever it took. She could have took the self-sponsor route. I know she would have been picked up in a heartbeat, but she didn't want to waste any time. She's dedicated. She's dedicated to serve this community. I've been really impressed so far with what she's done. Our firearms instructors say she's one of the best shooters. I was like, that's pretty good for a one-year cop. And her ability to communicate, as I've communicated with her, and some of the calls and the feedback from her FTO, she just does an amazing job. And I think she's going to bring a lot to our table. I want to thank her family. Get a little choked up when I talk about family. But we ask a lot of the family. She's got her fiance here, her parents, grandparents. He's also a police officer. But we ask a lot of the family because they give a lot to support their, their loved one in their career. You know, when they're home on Christmas or, or holidays and different things, she's going to be here serving our community. And so we owe them a lot of gratitude that they're here to support her and they'll continue to support her through her career. And so I just can't, I, I'm just excited to have her as part of our department. So we want to welcome her and swear her in. And, and do you want to say a few words? You can. Couple of questions for her on the hot seat.
What?
Go ahead.
No, I wasn't.
It's a trick question.
I'll put you on the hot seat. I won't do that. But she can talk. That's why I'm trying to tell you. I talk too much, but she definitely can talk.
I just want to say thank you for allowing me to work for Riverdale City. I'm super excited and I'm happy to be here. So.
She's off to a fantastic start. So, well, for that being said, we'll have Michelle.
I had one question, chief. Is it okay for us to know where she lives? Like what city she lives?
I live in Hooper.
Okay.
So this is much closer as well.
Yeah, that's good.
For where she was going.
Yep.
So, any other questions for her?
With the traffic, it's about the same time though. I thought it was the same time. No.
We'll want to make sure we get some pictures. Is it okay if we put it on, at least in the newsletter and maybe on social media, if that's okay? Like whatever you guys, appropriate.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're, as long as she's okay with it, we're on, to have her. We want to show, you know, show her off.
You got it, Mr. Brooks?
Yeah.
Pictures.
Step over this way right here.
Okay.
Please not hit me.
Raise your right hand and point at me. Are you standing right?
Aye, Hayden Price.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the State of Utah.
And the State of Utah.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And then I will discharge my duties.
Then I will discharge, discharge my duties.
As a Riverdale police officer with fidelity.
As a Riverdale police officer with fidelity.
You have to sign the file away.
Awesome. Just again, thank you to her family and we'll thank you terribly. We appreciate your support.
Congratulations.
All right.
Well, thank you. This, I, I, this is the first time I'm getting to meet Officer Price and we're super excited to have you and welcome, welcome to your family. You may have, understand the culture here a little bit already, but we, we believe and take you very good care of our police officers. And you will be in our thoughts. And as you heard Counsel Arnold's prayer tonight, that's one of the, you, you guys are people that we pray for. And we want you to, to return home to your family every night and, and feel like you are supported. And you, I mean, you got an awesome chief and just an awesome organization. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is the last time we meet.
We'll have her here for something.
You gotta be cooking burgers every year.
Block parties.
Come on, man.
Okay, do you want me to move on to the next?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Steve May came up. So we're going to do something a little different. We ain't going to swear him in, but he's going to swear to do a good job.
Haha.
Just kidding. Steve, he's been here for a little bit. This is probably overdue. He's our new code enforcement officer. He comes to us as a retired fireman from California. He had a very illustrious career in the fire service, working arson investigations to fire stuff supervision. He, he did it all. He ended up moving here with his significant, significant others, fiancee, to Utah, and was just kind of looking for, you know, a part-time job. And we were very, very fortunate when we opened this part-time position up that we found someone of his caliber with his background and his experience. I mean, it's just second to none. One of Steve's strong suits is his ability to communicate and befriend people. You know, I can't tell you how many contacts he's made since he, he began here, was it August? Was it August? And really, no complaints, not one complaint. He has one of the hardest jobs, I would say, animal control and code enforcement. You mess with people's pets and you mess with their weeds, they get upset. And he does it flawlessly. He, and people thank him and, and, and smile at him. I have a few things just kind of, just to give you guys, I'll, I'll bring it up to you. This is just this month, just some of the stuff he's been working on. It's not that big a deal. But just to give you an idea how busy he's been staying, he's a, he's a, just pass those up. He's very self-initiated. So we, we, we respond to reafter calls. So if we have a complaint or something, you know, we, we try to get on top of that. But he's out proactively looking all the time. So a lot of times when we do get complaints, I'm like, hey, you know, like we talked about Lowe's. I actually talked about Lowe's, he's like, before, a couple of weeks ago, he was like, yeah, I've been on that, they're a pain in my butt. It's like, one of these days I'm going to stump him. I'm going to be like, what about this address? He's just got a list. He, you know, and there's, it's, now and again, stuff slips through the cracks, but he's eager to go out and make this community beautiful. And when he does it, he doesn't do it with the iron fist. You know, these people that we're dealing with in our communities, a lot of them have hardships, they have things that are going on. And he tries to handle it at the lowest level. And pretty much everybody he's dealt with, I think he's maybe issued one citation just barely. And that was after he worked several months with this individual to try to resolve it at the lowest level. But most of the stuff that he's done, he's been able to resolve. I mean, sorry, it's kind of a jumble of, I spread you into a bunch. But those, that's just this month. Those are the contacts he's, our cases he started. And a lot of the stuff on the right, it's already been resolved. Now, is it going to be perfect resolution? No. A lot of these, these places he's dealing with have big problems. And so he doesn't go and say, hey, you got to fix this whole house and every, every weed and everything in a week. He, he tries to chip away at it. So we're going to focus on maybe the biggest problem to start and give him a certain amount of time. And then he'll go back and say, okay, now let's, we got that done. Let's focus on this. And it's, it's one of those things that's going to require constant maintenance. It's like dealing with homeless in our, our community and panhandlers. You know, it's something we're going to be dealing with through, you know, the, for, for forever. Code enforcement is just one of those things, we just have to stand top of it and maintain it. And so he's off to a good start. We want to welcome him. I want you to put a face to him. I want you to feel comfortable if you have a concern in your neighborhoods that you can reach out to me or him. And, you know, we're going to try to resolve it. We're going to resolve it in a professional, polite manner. And then obviously if we need to escalate things as a last resort, we would. But do you have any questions for Steve?
Can I give your number to my wife?
Don't do it, Steve. Just don't. I, I would add, though, I don't think there's been a day go by that I've gone over to visit the police department, that there's not cookies over there. And Steve brings them. So he spends his whole salary on cookies, if nothing else. But I echo what Chief Warren said, he's been phenomenal. I mean, just excellent on a lot of things that we just, it's just been nice, really nice.
And I want to say the same thing. I've had, actually people compliment our code enforcement guy. And I, that job is so hard. And even myself, I come down on kind of the, I mean, how hard do you come down on somebody and what they do on their private property? Like it, it's a hard, it's a hard situation, but he's got just the right personality. And it really takes someone special. There, these guys that said, we're lucky to have gotten him, you're, you're exactly right. We get the wrong person, it's not going to work. And so he just goes in there and he just says, hey, let's come up with a plan to fix this up. And it's not, it's not with a citation in hand, you know, it just, and, and he's made a huge difference already. And so I think it's, as, as we were sitting here, I thought, you know, it's good for you guys to see what we got for the tax increase that we voted for. I mean, this is, this is our code enforcement. And, and we, we got a little bit lucky, but we, you know, we got top-notch on, on that. And so it's, it's a real benefit to have him. And he is making a difference. So very responsive. So, anyway, thank you.
I always give you opportunity. Anything you want to add? Thank you for welcoming me here. The chief and the whole, the whole department's been awesome. I get great support when I need them. The citizens have been really good, surprising. But oftentimes, if you don't get a complaint, that means you're not doing your job. So I like to take, I, I put it in perspective, there's an old commercial, an old tennis player, Andre Agassi, and there was this pitch they had that said, image is everything. And so you want to project that Riverdale's a first-class city. And if you let things go, you're, you're not going to be a first-class city. And this city really has done an amazing job. I work with great employees, I have great support. And it really is, it's, it's a good job. I enjoy it. Thanks for the opportunity. And if, like I said, if you need me, feel free to call or let my boss know and, and we'll be in contact. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks. Okay, moving on to number four, we have a presentation from Margaret Rose from the YCC.
Well, before all you guys leave, say thank you.
Don't take it personal.
A long time ago, I got over that. Council members and mayor, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to, to talk with you tonight. Many of you probably are familiar with YCC. But just in case, if you're not, Michelle, will you advance those slides? Or do you have a clicker?
I don't.
Okay. We are a nonprofit organization in Ogden, serving all of Weber County and Morgan Counties. We're the only domestic violence and sexual assault service provider in the two-county area. Statewide, there are about 16 shelters or DV service providers, sexual assault service providers. And we each cover a geographic area of the state. So we have coverage statewide in every county and every region, every city. So we do that through providing safety resources and, and advocacy, so that we can get people either back on a track to a healthier life, or literally maybe not back on a track, but actually on maybe their first track to a, to a healthier life. So one of, I kind of wanted to give you a snapshot of, of violent crime in Weber County, and this is over the last five years. And forgive me, some of these slides that I might show you might be a little bit challenging for some people. So just kind of bear with. kinda bear with me. Hopefully, we can get through this without trying, you know, causing too much sort of vicarious trauma. Um, but we, um, have aggravated assault, fondling, rape, robbery, sexual assault with an object and sodomy. And those were, or excuse me, sexual assault with a weapon. Um, and those are, um, the, kind of the snapshot of all the violent offenses that take place in Weber County that your law enforcement officers, um, are dealing with on an, on a daily basis. We are the provider who actually supports the victims in these, all of those crimes. Um, not so much with robbery, although we do see a lot of robbery co, sort of co, coexisting with sexual assault with domestic violence in particular. Um, and so, we're kind of the other side of, we don't deal with perpetrators. We don't deal with the, with the person committing the crime. That's the law enforcement side. We are the victim services, um, provider. So, um, your law enforcement agency thankfully, um, and the chief who was just here, um, have, have.
He'll be back.
Yeah, good. It's okay. Um, it, they've been using the lethality assessment program for a number of years and that's the good news, um, because it, it is a tool that's been proven to reduce assaults and reduce homicides. Um, it's been around for probably fifteen years, um, evidence-based tool, started in Maryland. Um, it's highly effective. And what it does is if, uh, if an officer's responding to a, a call, a domestic call, which we know can be the most, some of the most dangerous calls that they respond to, um, that it, it allows them, it gives them a tool to use, um, to, it's just a question, it's a questionnaire with eleven questions on it. And if people answer affirmatively, really to any of the top questions, um, it, it sort of generates an automatic call to the service provider, um, to make sure that that victim gets connected to services. Um, and what it does is it sort of takes the subjectivity out of it. And the police officers no longer like, ooh, should I call? Should I not call? Are they really at risk? Are they not really at risk? And so, it, it kinda takes that subjectiveness out of it, um, for the officers. And so, I think by and large, it's, uh, it, it's a very effective tool, um, to support victims and get them connected to, to the providers. So, if you would. Um, just to kinda give you an example, so statewide, the, the LAP or the lethality assessment program went into effect, um, in law, um, July 1. And so, many of our law enforcement, um, agencies started using the LAP. They started administering the LAP starting like in May, kinda right, as soon as the legislature passed it, um, people kinda started like, well, we, we, we're gonna use this. So, let's start, basically, let's start implementing it before it becomes statute. And so, in May and June, we saw, um, eight, statewide, eighteen hundred and eighty-two LAPS administered. Um, and then in July, just in the month of July, when it became law, there were eleven hundred and sixty-six. And comparing that to the prior year, there were only forty-five hundred LAPS administered in the entire state. And so, when it became law, you know, y, you know, well over eleven hundred, um, LAPS a month. And that has remained really consistent since the, those times. Um, we didn't have a huge explosion of domestic violence starting in Ju, in July. What we had was a huge explosion of people administering the LAP and getting people connected to their local service provider, YCC being the one for, for this area. So, go ahead, Michelle. Um, and so, just to kinda give you an idea, this is August, um, and what you'll see is you'll see, like, essentially, two-thirds of the LAP, um, that were administered in Weber County were considered high-risk for lethality. Um, and sixty-four percent, if you, um, fast forward for September, October, November, December, January, and I'm not gonna bore you with pie chart for every month, um, it's consistent. It's about two-thirds of all the LAPS that are administered are, are considered high-risk for lethality. And so, you can see that getting people connected to a domestic violence service provider, um, is, is really essential in helping decrease those homicides and, and further assaults. So, go ahead. Um, in July, kinda circling back here, just to kinda give you an idea of what those data look like, um, we had, you know, over two-hundred people threatened with a weapon, um, through, over three-hundred people saying that their aggressor threatened to kill them. Um, about the same number believed that their aggressor could kill them, would kill them. Um, and four-hundred-and-twenty-eight said the aggressor had tried to choke them. And that is a really, um, significant number, um, in terms of, we know through the data, we know through research, that when somebody has been strangled, if they've been choked, it is the number-one indicator that they are at risk for homicide. Um, to the point where even researchers have said, if, basically, in this case, it's a man, if a man has put his hands on your neck, he has just told you that he will kill you at some point. So, it's, it's a very significant, um, indicator of homicide. And then, of course, use of a weapon, um, and access to a gun, um, is the other. So, um, yeah, just kinda going on, um, with the, the, the strangling, um, we know that the odds of homicide increased seven-hundred-and-fifty percent for someone who has, um, been, been choked, been strangled. Uh, and I think one of the things that we're all learning about too is that, um, that whether there are visible marks or not, there's a specific exam that we do with victims. Um, and the, the medical implications for being choked, um, whether there are external marks or not, are, there are some really significant long-term medical issues that, um, manifest be, due to being strangled. And so, um, it's a really important piece that, um, our staff conducts, um, when they go on call-outs, um, to support victims. Um, and we get them in and we get them to, um, to medical providers too, if they've, if they've experienced that. So, um, I wanna give you just kind of a little snapshot of, of the services that we have provided. Um, this is by individual. So, obviously, um, Ogden City, we, we provide the most, um, services, sorry, we provide services to the most individuals coming from Ogden. I mean, population-wise, that makes sense. Um, and then the following are the top three cities excluding, excluding Ogden, um, Roy, West Haven and North Ogden in terms of numbers. Um, and those are, are individuals that we, um, provided services for, uh, during, during all of last year. So, good. Um, one of the things that I'm working with our staff is we don't, our, our federal grants actually prohibit us from requiring any, really any disclosure of, um, sort of any personal information. Um, it, we are, are a zero-barrier facility, um, zero-barrier services. And so, if, if you're accessing services and you don't wanna tell me where you're, where you were most recently living, um, maybe people are, are experiencing homelessness or they've maybe moved two or three times. It doesn't matter to us. We are, we'll, we will bring you in and help you no matter what. And so, um, we don't collect a lot of prior address or current address, um, from our, uh, from our clients. I'm really working with our staff to ask them in a soft way to get that information as best they can. Um, you can see the breakdown in terms of services, um, for Ogden. Um, you know, a little over two thousand, closer to twenty-five-hundred, um, services, discreet services that we provided. Um, and then you see all the other cities combined and then the outlying counties, which we do, um, I can talk a little more about that later, but we do offer services for people from, uh, without, um, outside the county. And then, we had ten thousand services or ten thousand discreet services that we provided last year, and we don't know where those individuals, uh, resided. So, um, my guess is that it, it breaks out if we were to, to, to break it out like that, it would fall in that same sort of representation. Um, it, it makes sense. Um, but we don't know that. And like I said, we're, we're working on that because I, I would like to have better data, um, than this, but I think it's fair to say, I think it's a fair assumption to, to say it'd be relatively reflective of, of that breakout. So, um, if you look at, um, outside of Ogden, again, just another look, um, at, at Riverdale, um, about twenty, um, fifteen to twenty individuals served, um, in, in December, or excuse me, in twenty-twenty-three. So, again, not accurate. I mean, that's, th- those are the ones we know of. And then, we have the ten thousand other people we, we don't know about. Um, but again, that's kind of the, I think, again, representative of what sort of the county looks like in terms of the clients accessing services at YCC. Um, LAPS by police department, and again, kudos to the Riverdale Police Department and the chief, um, in just ensuring that the LAP has been used for, for a while now. And actually, our staff go out on quite a few calls. The officers in Riverdale do utilize our staff, um, frequently. Um, not that you have, we have frequent calls, but when we do have calls, it's, um, I, I don't know how to say that, like, they, they have a good partnership with Riverdale Police. How's that? Um, and so, that's, um, again, you know, kudos, I think, to, to the police department here, um, in using the LAP and making sure that they're giving that handoff, um, to our, to our staff. Um, when, I, I think this is the sobering part statewide, and this is the demand that we're seeing also, and the impact that, that we're seeing in terms of the demand for our services, is that since the LAP went into effect in July, that we're seeing an eighty-six percent increase in referrals, um, over the prior year. And so, all of the domestic violence service providers statewide have just had, I mean, we've been inundated with, with referrals, which is a really good thing. Um, but again, like everywhere, you know, we're struggling with resources in order, and staffing to, in order to keep up, um, with the number of people accessing shelter, number of people act, you know, needing food and shelter, um, advocacy, the classes, um, you know, protective orders, all of those things that we do. Um, I think the, the really, the silver lining is that we have seventy, in, in our case, we have seventy-four percent of victims who are referred are actually engaging with services. They're not, they're not waving it off, saying, yeah, I got a referral, but I'm not gonna work with you all. I'm good. You know, when we have three-quarters of the people engaging with services, that's, that's a high rate of, of, I think, success in terms of getting people the support they need to get them out of their dangerous situation. Um, and we know eighty-eight percent of victims statewide had never accessed services before. So, it's working. It's working really, really well. Um, that's the good news. And so, we know we can decrease homicide and assault. Um, and also, um, well, I'll give you this little snapshot too, just to kinda give you an idea of the prior couple of years. Um, and again, this was pre-LAP. Um, we, um, we typically field somewhere between five-thousand and ten-thousand, um, crisis calls a year. Um, we have a twenty-four-hour crisis line three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, uh, both for sexual assault and for domestic violence. Uh, we did almost fourteen-thousand shelter nights, uh, the prior year, last year. Um, we have a sixty-one-bed crisis shelter, um, and we're currently building a fourteen-unit, um, apartment building for transitional housing. So, one of the challenges that we see when people leave the crisis shelters, they don't have anywhere to go. Um, and just to digress slightly, we see a tremendous amount of financial abuse with people when they are experiencing domestic violence. And so, they often have no rental history, no tenant history, no, um, their, their credit cards have been run up, um, so they don't have any credit. They don't have access to their finances or any bank accounts. It's just the, the financial abuse is really, really bad. Um, and so, we're building this transitional housing unit to help. People can stay there for up to two years, um, and they have to make progress. They have to pay rent. We'll serve as a landlord and try to get them back on their feet. We have financial literacy courses. So, we're trying to do even more comprehensive sort of wraparound services, um, for that and not just be a crisis shelter. Cause what we see is when people don't have options, they go back to that abusive relationship. Cause frankly, it's easier than trying to navigate all the, all the other barriers out there. We have classes, um, free therapy. Um, and then we have, we have three full-time advocates who work on, uh, just doing protective orders and advocacy work and helping people navigate the, the justice system. Um, and they work really closely with the community-based or with the, uh, uh, law enforcement-based, um, system-based advocates as well. So, and then, of course, we have, um, we have, uh, full-day childcare, um, and, um, and our shelter. So, we serve a lot of, a lot of meals, um, as well. So, just kinda give you a, a snapshot of, of YCC. Uh, I think one of the things that, that we have done, we have a LAP coordinator at YCC and she goes out and works with each one of the police departments, um, especially with new officers and can do all the LAP training on how to administer, how to do a handoff, how to work with the community-based advocates with our staff. Um, and so, that, that's a great, um, service, um, in terms of, of services that we provide. Uh, we provide support for victims, obviously. Uh, we do have twenty-four-seven response where we have a staff that's on-call all night long. Um, and so, we'll do the on-scene, um, as long as it's secure. And as I mentioned, the officers here have been great about calling our staff. Um, and they'll do the strangulation exams also, um, protect, protective order assistance. Uh, and then we have obviously our shelter, um, and support for victims. I think, um, what really matters when we connect services, victims with services, um, is that we can also really help decrease the number of repeat responses for law enforcement. And I'm sure the chief can speak to this better than I can, but oftentimes, a lot of those are the, the repeat calls to the same residents. Um, and so, if we can get those people connected to services, that decreases those repeat calls for law enforcement and keeps them safer too. Um, cause we know that that's, that's a dangerous time for them. Um, and so, we can also decrease the number of assaults and homicides that take place in the community. So, um, we know, those are the most dangerous times for law enforcement. It's the most dangerous times for, uh, for victims is when they're leaving and the, the two weeks, um, following the time that they leave an abusive relationship are really high. Um, and it actually extends out to two years of, um, really high rates of assault and homicide stalking. Um, so, I just, by, um, go ahead, switching that. What we're trying to do is increase our resources, um, in the county and asking for help from all of the cities. Um, and not just trying to do a blanket like, hey, can you give us money? Uh, we're really trying to enter into agreements with the cities, a full partnership with the cities in terms of, we provide a service for the, for the, uh, residents in the city. Um, we need to increase our funding about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to offset, um, our shelter services, our advocacy work, our staffing and so on. And so, we broke that out based on, um, population, um, throughout the county. Uh, and Riverdale is, uh, represents three-point-four-four percent of the population by the twenty-twenty-two census count. Um, and these data came from Weber County, so hopefully they're accurate, um, that those numbers look familiar to you. Um, and so, uh, three-point-four-four percent of a hundred and fifty thousand is, is fifty-one-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. So, I'd be happy if you rounded that up. Um, but, uh, but that's what I'm here, um, you know, asking if we can, uh, really establish a partnership. So, what we've done, um, in Ogden City over the last few years is we've just, it's a, it's a police services agreement or a contract. So, it's not like I'm asking the city for a donation. I'm asking for, we're happy to provide services. We're happy to provide training, um, really whatever kind of support that, that the residents need, um, that we can, that we can offer anyway. Um, and, uh, just a, a small, um, I guess, contribution, I stipend, how, whatever you wanna call it, um, to help offset our, our services. So, I think, um, together, go ahead, Michelle. I think together, um, you know, what we're looking for is really between law enforcement, between YCC and the cities. I think we can really create a safety, you know, a, a network of safety and support for everyone. Uh, I think we do a great job of, of the, sort of the perpetrator side of. Uh, I think we do a great job of, of the, sort of the perpetrator side of law enforcement and accountability and, you know, incarceration and, you know, all, all of the treatment. Um, I don't think we do a great job of supporting victims, state, you know, uh, across the board. So anyway, that's, that's what I, uh, that's what I'm proposing, so.
Any questions for Ms. Rose? Counsel Hansen.
So right now, the county funds 150,000 of the budget?
No, the county actually doesn't contribute anything right now.
Okay, so it's all just donation-based?
Right, so, um, it's, it's a great question. So our budget, um, right now is about 3.8 million dollars. About 60% of that are state and federal grants. And then I raise my staff and I have to raise the other about 40% of that budget. So it's a, it's a heavy lift every year to, to be constantly raising that money. And, and one of the, you know, one of the, I guess, the stabilizing factors that I'm looking at is, you know, if we can establish ongoing agreements with the cities in the county, um, that helps us stabilize our budget, of course, um, where it's a little less rollercoastery, um, and that this is one way to, for us to help do that.
Have any of the other cities committed to the contract?
Yeah, I'm on the tour of city councils.
Yeah.
I tried to short-circuit it, I talked to the chiefs group, I talked to, uh, the Wakehog Group, um, in hopes that I wasn't going to go to 15 city council meetings, but I'm on the tour. It's great, yeah.
And so have any signed?
Um, so North Ogden has always committed, uh, Marriott Sladeville has always, West Haven has always, Ogden City has always, so I'm hoping that we get a few more on. I think, I think the ones I've talked with, um, I've been to South Ogden, Hooper, uh, Roy, I go to North Ogden next Tuesday, it's all on Tuesdays too. Like, um, I think we're, you're the, my sixth one. So, um, I, you know, they don't have their budgets finalized, but I, it felt promising, but I, I can't speak for them at this point.
Counsel Haas.
I noticed one of the early, uh, slides and then I think one of the later ones, the, the one where you had it in bars, where there was the, the small bars and then the big bar that wasn't allocated. Um, and then I think in the, in one of the early ones, I think it was the lap, um, the laps where it said like 20, a, a little over 2,000 were from Ogden City. And then the other, another 1,700 or so were from the rest of the county.
Right.
Wouldn't that kind of, um, push you to allocate, to, to ask for allocation based on, um, based on need rather than just on population? I mean, if ha- if half of the, of the need is coming, you know, half of your, um, stuff is coming from Ogden City, um, I, I know that they're already the largest city, so they contribute the most, but they're contributing a third and yet they're getting more than half the benefit. So I, I just wonder if, if you had looked at that as an option to, to try to see if there was a different way that you could allocate the, the costs?
Um, so it, it begs a good question and I, I, I can understand the rationale there. Um, I think until we have better data, first of all, I don't think it's probably a, a fair assumption to make. Um, I think the other, the, the other risk that we run in, and historically, kind of, I've run into this with a few cities where they're like, we don't have that problem. See, we only had three people and so we're good, you know? And so it's a, it's also can be a little bit dismissive. Um, the, the other thing that we know about people is that they're incredibly transient. Um, and I don't mean that in a pejorative way at all, but people move a lot, especially with the housing situation the way it is. People move a lot and so, um, especially if you're in a destabilized, um, relationship, um, people move a lot, they, they move frequently. And so kind of trying to determine like where people actually arrived or are they're from is very, very difficult. Um, so I, I s- I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't quite hold, I don't know if it entirely hold up to scrutiny.
Um, the other thing that I, uh, that I wonder, and this is kind of like, um, when you, when they talk about, um, certain types of, uh, lifestyle choices and, um, you know, just health type things about, you know, that doing this increases your chances for, for, uh, a certain type of cancer 350%. You know, so you have a one in a million chance, or if you do this, you have a one in 300,000 chance. Um, so that, my next question is, when you say it's 750, um, percent increase, um, and then this also goes to the requirement of the lab. Ha- ha- have you, how many domestic violence homicides are there in Weber County in a year? And did that go down with the introduction of lap?
Yeah, I mean, uh, boy, in a year? I'm trying to think, in the last, in the last three years, I think we've had six. And I don't know if, if you remember off the top, but I don't, I don't have those data in front of me, um, obviously, I don't have anything in front of me. Um, so I don't, I can't speak to that. Um, I can speak to the lap data where if someone is strangled, that's what you were referring to, is that their risk of homicide increases 750%. That is, that is a, a preponderance of evidence in that larger research study where those individuals who receive services, um, who hadn't been strangled versus the ones who had and their subsequent deaths. And so that, that is steeped in data, um, in, in evidence. Um, but in terms of the number of homicides that we have here in Weber County, I don't know if you could draw a statistically sound conclusion, because I don't think our, our sample's probably large enough to, to say this, you know, this caused this or this didn't cause that. So I don't, I don't think, thankfully, I don't think we have quite that number. Um, I think what we're trying to do is prevent that and we know that the lap prevents, um, people from further assault and, and homicide, um, in that they get connected to resources. Um, and so that's really what we're focusing on is making sure that we're getting people connected to services, um, and that we're trying to keep people safe. So I think the, the byproduct of that is that it decreases assaults and homicides. Um, obviously that's our end goal, but it's certainly not our only goal. There's a whole lot of work, really good work that happens between a referral and preventing homicide, you know, like a lot, so.
Counsel Richter.
I was interested in your comment from the county, that you didn't have any support from the county directly? Give me your, your thoughts on that, have you not approached them?
I have a lot of thoughts. Um, we, I have approached the county, um, and they say, please approach the cities. And so, yeah, I, I think I was saying that in the, in the mayor's group, I'm like, I'm gonna stay out of that, I'm gonna stay out of that fight. So, um, I, all I can do is approach and, and request and make my case and, and hope that that, that resonates with people. So in that, in that chart, um, I, I do feel like, um, I've, I've heard a couple of arguments from the city, like, or from the county rather, excuse me, um, like, well, we should only cover the, the support for clients in unincorporated Weber County. The city should take care of everybody else. And I'm like, but you have a responsibility for everyone in the county as, as a county commission, you know? And so I, I don't know, it, maybe if the mayor's all way in on like, hey, we'll contribute, you know, we'll, we'll engage if you all engage. I, I think that's fair. I don't think it should reside with any one city, which is why I'm trying to, you know, appeal to all of the cities to offer a little bit of support to us for the services that we're providing, because none of the cities, none of the cities have the services, nor I realize can you afford the services and probably you don't want to get into, uh, that business, you know? And so we're here and quite, to be totally transparent, quite honest, we're going to provide services to the residents of your city, whether you help fund it or not, we just will. But we need some support.
Anyone else? Counsel Arnold.
I've, I've done some volunteer work with the Y C C, um, we always take stuff there, um, whatever we can do. It, it's a great organization, you should be proud of the things that you do. And I think, um, especially, you know, Chief Warren, I mean, we, we know who supports us and the things that they're reaching out to. And I, I personally think we have an obligation to put some of that in our budget. So.
Thank you.
Just me personally, I can't speak as a counsel, so.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Counsel Haas?
You would think that since the, uh, county has a health department, that this type of thing is really, I mean, it, it's, it's generated by law enforcement, but it's really a health and human services, um, product and service. And, and that's really what the county does for us. That's one of the things that the county does for the whole county, not just for unincorporated parts of the county.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
It's, you know, it's not, it's not really a law enforcement.
And I'll say it's not uncommon, I'm pretty certain Box Under County doesn't get any, the Lantern House doesn't get support directly from the county, but it's similar with grants and with raising money. And it's, it's hard because I see, I'll, I see it a lot from both sides, but such an important social need, um, and my, my side's skewed because I'm on the prosecution side. And so it's really hard to see these people come around and around and around and try to fight for the defendants to be released constantly from charges and prosecution. And, and despite that, despite knowing that's so common and frustrating for everyone and that they put themselves back into these dangerous situations, there's a reason you provide the services that you do. And even if you can reach those few that follow the services all the way through, that make a new choice, that are able to get the help that they need, it, I mean, how, how much is that worth to save someone from that kind of a situation? So, so yeah, I agree that, I mean, we support the C J C. It seems like there should be some, if you're assisting our officers with people in Riverdale and assisting people who show up that may be from Riverdale, that, you know, we want to help our residents be safe and we want our community to be safe and our officers to have the support that they need. So maybe that is something we can talk about in the future.
Yeah, thank you. We, we know it takes about seven times for people to leave their relationship, you know? I mean, think about trying to leave a, a healthy relationship or at least a nonviolent, not, you know, non-incredibly dysfunctional relationship and how hard that is. Um, but we know it takes about seven times for people to kind of go and leave and go back. It's, it's very difficult, you've got a lot of factors at, at play, fear being one of highly motivating one, so. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for coming in tonight and explaining it, uh, you, you do great work down there and, uh, and it, just know that it's not, it's not whether you need support, because you definitely need support, it's just who, who is responsible to do it. Um, I, I think you, you definitely need some support and I think everyone would agree with that. It's just like who's the right people to provide it and, and maybe it's us, these guys will get to decide. Um, I do work across the street from the Y C C and, uh, I see those little kids getting on the bus and stuff and it's, uh, it's a tough situation, so. Um, anyway, thank you for all that you do and your passion, um, giving up your Tuesday nights, going around begging, begging for money for, for something that shouldn't have to be begged for. Um, it's not something that should have to be begged for, but, uh, anyway, thanks for coming in.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
All right, let's move on to the consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the May 21st, 2024 council work session and council meeting. Any questions or changes or comments on those minutes? Counsel Haas?
Move to approve, um, May 21, 2024 council work session and May 2021, 2024, um, council work meeting minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Very good, that passes unanimously. We'll now move on to consent item number two, this is a big one, so bear with me. Consideration to set a public hearing to receive and consider public comments regarding the following, amending the Riverdale City budget for fiscal year 2024. Proposed amendments to the Riverdale City Code 1-7-2 salaries of the city council and mayor and 1-7-F-6 salary of the justice court judge. Proposed amendments to executive municipal officer compensation schedules, nonreciprocal interfund activity transfer of resources utilized by the city's general fund as provided by the city's water fund. And lastly, adopting the Riverdale City budget for fiscal year 2025. Uh, anyone, any questions or comments on that item? Counsel Arnold?
Move to, uh, set those public hearings as stated within the packet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll now move on to the action items. Number one, consideration of resolution 2024-15, awarding a bid for the 2024 4350 South sanitary sewer improvement project to workhorse excavation in an amount not to exceed Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the replacement of a main line for pretty much the whole block over there. It's a line that has several bellies in it, requires yearly maintenance on it, um, and the goal is to get rid of that yearly maintenance and provide a little better service over there. We don't, we have been able to maintain it, but we're gonna, we'll look at these every year and be bringing you some of these to replace every year's ongoing maintenance, so. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Douglas? Counsel Arnold?
Move to approve resolution 2024-15, awarding a bid for the 2024 4350 South sanitary sewer improvement project to workhorse excavation in an amount not to exceed $316,279.31.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, will you please pull the council?
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Hansen?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Very good, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number two, consideration of resolution 2024-16, adopting the county-wide mutual aid fire protection agreement. Chief Shawley?
So basically why this agreement's in place is the fire departments have to, as Chief Matthew brought up earlier, we have an NFPA standard guideline that we try to follow, make every attempt to follow. Single-family dwelling house fire requires 16 firefighters on scene within eight minutes. And for us to accomplish that, we have to have these agreements in place that the cities have the, that ability to bring outside agencies to come in and support each other to make it safe for our firefighters to do that. Now, a commercial structure like ours, double it's 32. So now you start adding what that looks like. Um, there's numerous times, including our fire that we had, that went to a third alarm that brought Davis County units into, into Riverdale. So these agreements are important in that aspect and that's what this one does, is it opens that up for us to use those resources and man, manpower especially.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Shawley? Counsel Richter?
Believe you indicated that with the addition, with the exception of Morgan County and, uh, and Mountain Green, that's the only real change.
It's really the only changes that I could see from the, even the past ones. It has pretty much the same wording.
And just from what you said in the work session, just to reiterate it, we don't routinely respond to calls up there, it would only be if they specifically asked for help.
I don't think we've responded up there on a fire. I can't think of one in years. Yeah, it's been a while, but it's been very, very frequent. So, can we have enough to do down here with these other cities?
Any other questions? Counsel Arnold?
Move to approve resolution 2024-16, as stated within the packet.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, will you please pull the council?
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Hansen?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Very good, that passes unanimously as well. Thank you and thank you, Chief.
Can I have a minute to discuss something else while I'm standing here before you go into closed session?
What is it?
I want to address the elephant in the room of why my men are sitting in this room right now and they have the last two times.
Not on the agenda.
Agenda, so I just think it's.
I mean, all you gotta do is put it on the agenda. Call call me, call the mayor, call Steve, anybody, put it on the agenda and it's a done deal.
Or could he, if it's just we're not doing action on it, can he just make a comment during city staff time?
I mean, if the council, if, yeah.
If it's just a comment.
If it's just, if it's just some comments and we're not going to have a discussion or make any decisions, I'm going to leave that with the council. You guys want to do that? Uh, let's just get a consensus. Do you want to, do you want to open that up right now or?
I think if we're not discussing it, I'm fine with it.
Open staff comment right now is what you're saying?
Going to do that now instead of after the closed session is just, because we have a section for staff comments.
Session was going to go, so.
Uh, we'll allow some staff comments right now just from you.
I appreciate it. Um, we're hurting. I've heard a lot of good things tonight about supporting the city, protecting the city, protecting the employees, helping the employees. I'm two hundred percent spent my overtime budget. That's who's working it. They're working on average, there are a lot of seventy-two hour shifts, and that is a long time for these guys to sit in a fire station. And they're here today and they've came here last time when I talked to them, they simply want to be seen. They don't feel seen, they don't feel heard. There, it, this hasn't been months, this has been a lot of months, and it's it's got to the point now that we can't hire. We can't do certain things that we have to do as a fire department, and we can't do those things until we start moving forward and making some decisions. And this department is getting to a critical state. As your fire chief, it's my responsibility to tell you that, that your fire department is going to a critical state. And that's really all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number four, consideration to adjourn into a closed session pursuant to Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five C and E to discuss the sale or purchase of real property impending or reasonably imminent litigation. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Um, I guess do we, do we need to state the reason or it is for 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 one of the approved reasons? Are you okay with that? Okay, the second is okay with that as well?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Maragoni, will you please pull the council?
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Very good, that passes unanimously as well. Thank you and thank you, Chief.
Can I have a minute to discuss something else while I'm standing here before you go into closed session?
What is it?
I want to address the elephant in the room of why my men are sitting in this room right now and they have the last two times.
Not on the agenda.
Agenda, so I just think it's.
I mean, all you gotta do is put it on the agenda. Call call me, call the mayor, call Steve, anybody, put it on the agenda and it's a done deal.
Or could he, if it's just we're not doing action on it, can he just make a comment during city staff time?
I mean, if the council, if, yeah.
If it's just a comment.
If it's just, if it's just some comments and we're not going to have a discussion or make any decisions, I'm going to leave that with the council. You guys want to do that? Uh, let's just get a consensus. Do you want to, do you want to open that up right now or?
I think if we're not discussing it, I'm fine with it.
Open staff comment right now is what you're saying?
Going to do that now instead of after the closed session is just, because we have a section for staff comments.
Session was going to go, so.
Uh, we'll allow some staff comments right now just from you.
I appreciate it.
Um, we're hurting. I've heard a lot of good things tonight about supporting the city, protecting the city, protecting the employees, helping the employees. I'm two hundred percent spent my overtime budget. That's who's working it. They're working on average, there are a lot of seventy-two hour shifts, and that is a long time for these guys to sit in a fire station. And they're here today and they've came here last time when I talked to them, they simply want to be seen. They don't feel seen, they don't feel heard. There, it, this hasn't been months, this has been a lot of months, and it's it's got to the point now that we can't hire. We can't do certain things that we have to do as a fire department, and we can't do those things until we start moving forward and making some decisions. And this department is getting to a critical state. As your fire chief, it's my responsibility to tell you that, that your fire department is going to a critical state. And that's really all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number four, consideration to adjourn into a closed session pursuant to Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five C and E to discuss the sale or purchase of real property impending or reasonably imminent litigation. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Um, I guess do we, do we need to state the reason or it is for 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 one of the approved reasons? Are you okay with that? Okay, the second is okay with that as well?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Maragoni, will you please pull the council?
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, very good, we are going into closed session.